Internet's. The B one local business district, the matter was published in the Herald on November fourteen, twenty twenty three. Have no objection. Comments from any of the authorities. I do have correspondence from the fire district and the. Village of Burr Ridge, which are part of the record. I have a plot of survey as exhibit one. I presume this markup, whatever it's supposed to be, is the site plan. And I have a purchase and sale agreement, which has been tendered. I don't need that and. Not inclined to take as an exhibit. And then I have group exhibit three. Which is some sort of a rendering, maybe the footprint of the building. I'm not sure what it is, but I'll take this document as a group exhibit three. Can I ask everyone who wants to testify to raise your hand and be sworn in, including the people that are online? My hand raised.
Okay, do you soundly swear or affirm that the testimony and evidence you're about to give at this time shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, do. Okay, who's the owner of the property?
Um, the current, the current owner is Carri Realty, LLC.
Okay, and you're, uh, how do you pronounce your name?
Um, Genie Flutterjohn, I'm the chief administrative officer for the company.
Okay. So let me just quickly address some, before you begin your presentation. I've got a couple of questions from Burr Ridge that I think are germane. You have any other locations similar to the one you propose?
I, I think it applies actually for all the questions. The game yesterday, I send it to. Yeah, because I'm the. And I said, with lies for all, I sent it to Jessica Esteban. Okay, so this is all the replies.
Okay, I'll just take this, I'll take this as your exhibit, we'll mark it as petition as exhibit number four. You know, it's an exhibit, you don't have to go over it, I'll review it later. So go right ahead with your presentation.
Okay, so I'm seeking for auto sale or selling on internet. So very much what we do, we are posting the car on the internet through the third companies advertising. And the customer, they call us, uh, to schedule an appointment, which is gonna be on appointment only. And then ob- obviously they will come check the car if they like it. And buy, uh. So the internet says that's new, there's no flags, no follow-ons, no like car for sale outside. Uh, just on, uh, uh, appointment.
Okay. What else?
Yeah, uh. I have in this business like since two thousand thirteen, I have another location in Nero side and I wanna expand my. Internet settlement and more. This location, which is, uh. Uh, very rich, it's very much nearby of, I mean. So. And that's very much. So I can also sell, they, or they obviously buy out on the internet, so there's no work in customer.
What hours of operation?
It's from nine to six.
Seven days a week?
No, uh, we just saw. On the.
And this exhibit is entirely inadequate, as far as I'm concerned. Is this supposed to be your site plan or what?
Yeah, this is, uh, this is a parking, only the, for the parking there for the car for share. The, the, the yellow, uh, mark. That's because you are just asking where do you wanna park your car, you know, put a stop parking.
Are these existing?
Yes.
Delineated parking spaces?
Yeah.
Okay, you were here before and got approval, but your proposal last time was no auto parking on site. How many cars are you proposed to have?
Uh, what is it? It's gonna be maybe fifty, whatever the, the, the space allow me, but I'm not gonna obviously use it for all of it. Because it's gonna be only electric car and like luxury car, so it's not. It's not as much inventory comparing with the high way. So eventually it's gonna be only, uh, electric car.
Okay, so you're the contract purchaser of the property?
I'm the buyer, actually.
Is sale closed?
Uh, no, I was just pending to approve.
So you're a contract purchaser pending approval of. Okay, well, I, I need to know. When do you, you have staff parking? When do you propose to have staff present?
Yeah, we show it here, actually, uh, this is, I don't know if you have it here.
By this?
Yeah, so this is here, the staff parking, it's any, any open spots, nothing. So there are only two.
So when do you propose to have staff present?
When?
All during the, all of your hours of operation?
Um, not really, because we only run the business for two people, uh, very much, so it's gonna be. Uh, maybe two spot or, and it's. Not for the time, it's like the reserve.
So they will not be there from nine to six, they'll be there when you have an appointment?
Yes.
What do you propose to do about the fire department comments?
We cannot do whatever they want to do to, uh, the, the, because we don't know this issue, but we cannot. Actually, we close the scene. We're gonna get all the permits, which is required by the village or by fire department or whatever.
I don't know what they are, they just say there are unresolved issues.
I mean, yeah, whatever they're gonna need, if you're gonna, uh, comply and.
Okay, what else do you have to tell us?
Um, nothing, uh, I, I mean, that's very much what we needed, again, our, in this, this is field. Uh, ten years, more than ten years, and we are now just starting. And, uh. Uh. And the reason I need to move to this situation because it very much is very close to my residence, like only one mile away from my, from I.
Okay, well, I need to have a better understa-, this is a really, for a business operation, this is a really sloppy exhibit. Uh, I need to know definitively the number of parking spaces and the number of cars, and it's not up to me to count these. I don't even know if these are properly delineated on the piece of property rather than on this.
This is already existing, pardon about how?
Okay, well, then you count them up and delineate the numbers and revise this exhibit.
Okay, it's, uh, it's probably, it's fifty car.
Well, how?
I thought, uh, you were.
But you said you have a, that's a maximum of fifty?
Yeah.
How many are you requesting?
Uh, it's gonna be, uh, I mean, all, this is the maximum, but we will not lose it, uh, the order. Just whatever we have inventory. Uh, wherever we post the car online should be there, obviously, for the customer to come. But, uh, my proposal is gonna be at forty, thirty-five, at that, this range.
Thirty-five, forty?
Yeah. On the land or on this. One point six, uh, okay, one point six.
Okay, so that's all you have for your presentation? Did you read the? Academic materials that were sent to you?
No.
Okay. You have anything else, uh? That you wanna add, as the, uh, car right operations person?
No, the only thing, I think that you had mentioned that there were some outstanding, um. Items at the property from art when we were in the process of opening, um. And. I think somebody had made the comment that we were kind of objecting to those. I just wanted to make sure it was clear, we never. We were just in the process of getting an understanding of, of exactly what was required from us, and we just decided to, to not expand our operations in Illinois. So I think.
Your point is, you didn't object to cooperating with the fire district, but you simply abandoned the project?
Yeah, before we got clarity, because there were some conflicting opinions amongst the entities there about what we would need to do. And we just not ever got to the point where we got to affirm answer before we decided to not move forward.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, I just, uh. Wanted to make sure, you know, the fire district says we're gonna have to revisit, you are gonna have to revisit those if this goes forward. Or somebody. And what about these other two people online? Who are you folks?
Yeah, my name's Alexis Zemitis, I, uh, live in a property right across Route eighty-three. From the designated property that they are, uh, that they own. Put it this way.
Hey, you wanna make a statement about this case?
Yes, uh, several things. First of all, light pollution. It's a very important thing, because, uh, they're going to be practically across the road from, uh, a residential area. And if they have cars parked there. They're going to have to, um, I don't know, gate them or something and keep lights on them, so people wouldn't steal them.
Well, have you seen the letter from Village of Burr Ridge?
No, I haven't, they haven't sent me one.
That issue, security, uh. Lighting, uh, et cetera, uh. Were addressed, and then we have like. Four or five word answers. Uh, to each point from the petitioner.
And so what is going to be done? I mean, because I know that there are several properties along that area around Route eighty-three that have been, come into contention recently.
There, there's no testimony from the petitioner about what he wants to do with respect to lighting or gating or security.
Yes.
Other than these cursory comments. Uh, in response to the, uh. Village of Burr Ridge.
Okay, well, we have a residential area here, and, uh, especially what, what happened at Willowbrook Kia last week with someone, uh. Uh, stealing cars there and everything, it's become a very, uh, it's, you know, it's preoccupying.
Okay. Yeah, I'm a concern.
You know, it's a, it's, it's a concern. Uh, second of all, uh. I know, I guess since they're an internet company, they won't be having much traffic. Uh, there's always the, you know, the issue of this intersection here. Uh, there's no deceleration lane. Or anything for cars to turn into, um, I think, what is it? Honeysuckle or Mockingbird? Uh, oh, I forget what the road is exactly, is it Mockingbird Lane? Thing? So, it's always, there's always a traffic concern, because. I live right across from there, and there's about forty, fifty honking horns every day of close calls here. So. And, uh, so, and the other thing is, you know, the, the possible criminal element of people actually going in there and stealing cars. I mean, if this place is going to be protected, do have, they have a night watchman or whatever around there. I mean, these are all concerns. But, you know.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there another person on the phone?
They're on the phone, but they didn't identify them, so I was talking to them.
Oh, okay. Is there an? I see another person on the phone with the last four digits, four, three, oh, five. Are you for this case, sir, or man? If you're, we don't hear your response, if you are responding, you must have muted your phone or whatever, but. I'm gonna give you another. Chance to respond. So not hearing a response, we'll call you for the next hearing as well. All right, do you have any final comments, sir? Okay, I'll take the case under advisement, and, and we will, uh, render a decision in the next couple of weeks. And then you'll be, uh, you'll have our decision. Available to you by email. Uh, and then we refer the matter to the county development committee and finally the full county board, so thank you very much, we'll close the hearing. This is the request for additional use to increase the total area of detached accessory buildings. From permitted fourteen ninety-four square feet to approximately two thousand one hundred twenty-eight square feet. That translates to fifteen oh four for an existing detached garage and six twenty-four for a proposed attached garage. The matter was, uh, published in the Daily Herald on November fourteen, twenty twenty-three. I have no objections from any of the various authorities to whom we've circulated the petition. I have two exhibits, one is a survey and two is the site plan showing the proposed new garage. Can I ask, uh, well, have you sworn in? Uh, Mr. Villarreal. Can you hear me? Hello? Who is it? Okay, Mr. Villarreal, um, you may be muted, I cannot hear you and I can't see you because you're on. Just on the telephone. I tried to call you for the last hearing as well. And I was not able to. Communicate with you in the last hearing and apparently not able in this hearing, so I'm gonna proceed with the hearing. Would you raise your hand, sir, and be sworn in?
Do you soundly swear or affirm that the testimony and evidence that you are about to give at this time shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Okay, could you state your name and spell your name?
Daniel Davis, D A N I E L, last name Davis, D A N I E S.
And are, you, uh, you're the property owner through this, uh, is it an LLC?
Yes, sir.
And do you live at the property?
I do, yes.
How long have you lived there?
Uh, almost a year and three months.
Okay, and, uh, do I have your two exhibits correct, the survey and the site plan?
You do, sir.
Very good, um, okay, this is a pretty straightforward case, you've got a two acre site, uh, a little over two acre site. And you wanna add, uh, six hundred or so square feet of space in the garage. Tell me, uh, what is the condition of the existing garage?
Well, the existing garage is, um, finders, nothing, uh. That's been changed on existing garage, new garage is. Because my son is a musician and playing, um, drums, so I moved him and his musicians out to. The existing garage, so we didn't hear any of the noise or neighbors, don't hear any noise of them practicing two days ago.
So I've never, I, I'm quite familiar with the term, but I've never encountered a garage band, but tell me that's what's going on.
That's, yeah, only part-time practicing there, so.
Okay, how many people in this band?
Uh, there's three.
And how often do they use it?
Uh, once or twice a week. Also, um, recently divorced and have, uh. A lot of excess, you know, furniture and stuff that, you know, we're using for the existing garage to. Temporarily store.
Are there visitors that, uh, come to the garage, the practice occurs?
No, I don't know. They go and do their own, um. Other kids who might be.
Okay, here, here's my concern, I, I don't wanna grant, um, an increase for an additional garage building. If it's used for a business purpose.
It is not.
This is, seems from your testimony to be a hobby. Uh, or similar to a hobby. Um. So, to the extent that there are no visitors to the site. Uh, it makes it more sound like it's simply a practice, you know, facility. And then you, you're telling me that, um. The contents of, well, the contents of the existing garage would be one hundred percent dedicated to the band?
No, not at all, sir, I, I also have furniture, my father passed away, I have a, uh. A car that we're storing in the existing garage as well. So not at all, this is just.
All typical residential household items?
Correct.
And is the same true of the, uh, new garage, proposed garage?
The new garage would just be for my personal vehicle.
Okay, how many cars do you have, or vehicles do you have?
Four.
Does your son live with you?
He does.
Okay. Uh, can you tell me those vehicles?
The makes and models or?
Uh, are two transportation automobiles or three or four of them all cars?
They're all cars, yeah, they're all cars, one is a Bronco, it's SUV.
Okay.
Um. Also, I have a work truck that I bring home from work and it doesn't stay there on the weekends.
What kind of work do you do?
Um, I actually work for a construction company.
Okay, but it's not your business, it's, uh, you're an employee?
Correct, yes.
Well, that's, I mean, pretty straightforward case with a modest, uh, proposed increase. Mr. Villarreal, am I now able to communicate with you?
I, I believe so, I'm not sure if you can hear me or not.
Yeah, I can hear you now, um, is it your intention to give testimony in this case?
Uh, I'm just the neighbor, I was just wondering what was being built and, because I have a similar. I live across the street, so I have something similar that I was wanting, wanting to do too, so.
Okay.
I was more wondering what the process was.
All right, hello? This is it, I hope you're impressed.
Very. Hi, neighbor.
You know, I don't have any, uh, other questions, like I said, it's, uh, I think I've used the word straightforward case a few times, and, uh. I'm done with questions unless you have something else you wanna present. Okay, do you know the process from here?
Not necessarily.
So I make a recommendation, it'll be in writing, it'll be available to you by email within the next few weeks. Uh, and then if my recommendation, uh, or my decision constitutes a recommendation to the county development committee. That's a subcommittee of the full county board. They'll, they'll hold a hearing and consider this case and many others. And then they will, uh, undertake some finding, uh. Usually consistent with mine, but not always. And then transmit the matter to the full county board, so it'll take, uh, another. Uh, well, given the, uh, season, it'll probably take till the end of December or December, this.
Okay.
Through those next several steps. But. I'm. Good to go unless you have anything else, if not, I'll close the hearing.
Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Have a good day.
You too.
Hey, this is, uh, Bob Carthol, the zoning hearing officer, I have two items on the agenda that were published for today. Those are. Uh. Oh seventy-five, the Acorn Acres case and oh eighty-four, Dr. Smoke. In both of those cases, I have a request to withdraw, and it's our custom to, uh. Uh, respond officially to the request, I will grant both of those requests, and we won't further consider either of these matters. Hey, I'm Bob Carthol, the zoning hearing officer, and I'll call case twenty-three oh eighty-seven, the Route fifty-three Cafe case. Um, this is a request for conditional use for a class B tavern restaurant in a B one local business district. Matter was published in the Daily Herald on, uh. November fourteen, twenty twenty-three, and I have no comments or objections from any of the, uh. Entities to whom we've circulated the petition. Can I ask you, sir, to raise your hand and be sworn in? And, uh, I see somebody on the. On the, uh, screen here who's identified as Shirley, uh, are, are you gonna give testimony in this case, Shirley?
No, sir, I'm just a neighbor who got the letter and decided to join the group.
So you just wanna see what's happening, but you're not gonna comment?
Exactly.
Okay, well, then you don't have to be sworn in. Um, sir, uh, would you please be sworn in?
Do you soundly swear or affirm that the testimony and evidence that you're about to give at this time shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. And tell us your name, sir?
Robert Fabry.
And what is your relationship to this petition? Uh, our owner. Of what?
Route fifty-three Cafe.
And fifty-three Cafe, how does that, how does that distinguish from the banquet facility, which we improved many years ago?
There, so you have the banquet facility and then next to it, there are six units. And your individual storefronts, that's one of those storefronts.
All right, now, my exhibits that have been presented are the combined survey site plan, because there's no. Uh, change to the structures or parking or whatever that's proposed for the site. And then I have, uh, some diagrams of presumably. That I'll take as group exhibit two, presumably of, um, the proposed floor plans, et cetera. I'll take these as advisory exhibits. Uh, group two, and the reason I say advisory is, I'm, I don't usually, um, if we have a site plan which proposes. Uh, changes to the layout, uh, we make that a condition, but I don't wanna make this a condition, if you. Put the men's room where the ladies room is, you know, or I suppose that's, uh. Good now, but, uh. Whatever you do with respect to any modifications, uh, will not affect. This particular case, so I'm taking this as advisory only, and you don't have to spend a lot of time. Next, I'd like to say that there is some. Consideration that, um, the ordinance be approved, the ordinance be amended, so that this would be, uh. Approved in a B one local business district as it is, as I recall in the B two district. So the timing of that, I'm not sure. But with that, by way of background, just tell me what's going on.
As far as the cafe? Yeah, so it'll be gaming, uh, there'll be the six machines. And then all the, obviously we have to have, uh, alcohol, so it'll be all just packaged goods. Disposable, there won't be any mixed drinks, which is beer wine at this, at this point. Uh, but everything's packaged, uh, and then the only food item would be snacks, packaged snacks.
And, uh, will the operation be integrated in any way with the banquet facility next door, two separate areas?
Okay.
So the food is. Really. Secondary, it seems, although I guess it's supposed to be primary. Um, what do you do about dumpsters and refuse, and you're not gonna cook anything on site?
Nothing is cooked, everything, like I said, everything's packaged, mainly snack items. Um, as far as waste, we have the, uh, for the banquet hall. Uh, all the stores have use of our dumpsters. So that's what we'll.
What are your hours of operation?
We, we don't have any set hours right now, um. We're looking, when we open, probably ten AM. To eleven during the week. Maybe midnight on the weekends.
Can I set that as a condition for the relief that may be granted? Ten to. Uh, eleven during the week and ten to midnight during the weekends?
Yes.
So during the week is five days a week?
It'll be five, five days.
And the weekends are Saturday and Sunday?
Uh, it'll probably be Friday, Saturday till midnight, and then Saturday through Thursday. Be the earlier hour.
Okay. Number of employees?
Right now, two.
I, I won't make that a condition, because I don't care if you have fifty.
I mean, there probably only one, I, I.
Yeah, um, what, in terms of parking, which is shown here, do you have a, uh, reciprocal agreement with respect to?
We are.
So you have use of this entire correct se- center, if you would call it.
Right, yes, all the stores, same with all of them.
Yeah, okay, yes. Any new lighting?
Uh, lighting is, they're already, uh.
No, no new lighting, and you haven't requested any relief for sign. No new lighting, and you haven't requested any relief for signage, so you, whatever the ordinance permits you will do. All right, do you have anything else?
I don't.
Right, uh there will be a time limit on this relief that's granted. I don't know if you're a contract purchaser or what the legalities are of your operation and your control of this this site. But the uh time limit is intended to uh give uh some leeway. For the ordinance to change, and as I said, it may be that this would be a matter of right in the future. Um if not, if that does not occur, you'll have to come back and repeat this at the end of the time period. Uh which, you know, it's not gonna be. Uh six months, but it's not gonna be a hundred years either, so I figure out something. Okay?
Yes.
I don't have anything else. So I'm uh I'll quote, oh, Shirley, are you satisfied? You still have no remarks?
I have no remarks, but may I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, you don't have to sworn in for questions, so no statements.
No statements. Um I'm not sure what I heard. Uh does this involve one storefronts or several?
One storefront.
Okay, and and how many machines will be in there?
There will be six.
Okay, all righty. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll close the hearing. You'll get a decision within, did I explain this to you? I explained it to a couple of others. Uh okay, so you get a decision of this proceeding in the, by email in the next couple of weeks. My uh decision constitutes a recommendation to the County Development Committee. The Development Committee will confer about this and other cases at their meeting and presumably early December. They will um then move the matter to the full coming board. But I don't think it's likely that we'll have an answer for this until probably uh the end of December, given. You know, various schedules and various next two steps, so, okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much, sir.
All right.